Welcome and thank you, everybody, to the April meeting for the Interstate 35 Board of Education. I'll do a quick roll call. Nathan Gibson here.
Melissa Keller here.
Dan Hutton here.
Jessica Buckland here.
Ross Baughman here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Review the I-35 mission statement, district priority, and board goals. Our mission statement, the Interstate 35 Community School District, exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society. Our district priorities are to articulate and support a cohesive, student-centered, pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. Our 24-25 board goals are to continue strengthening the culture of learning at Interstate 35 Community School District that lends to engaged learning and rigorous growth. And by the end of the 24-25 school year, the school will ensure transparency and will achieve optimal resource management by aligning staffing levels with student enrollment, maintaining a balanced budget, and ensuring full compliance with Iowa taxation laws. With that, the board, you should have all received a copy of the agenda. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been properly motioned to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the public hearing for the FY-25 budget amendment. There's a quick amendment that April had on. Did you want to talk about that real quick?
Yes, just going through and looking at the possible estimated expenses. The hope is still that we won't actually go over, but with it being close enough when the budget is that high, I wanted to get the $100,000 to one line item and $120 added to another one to make sure that we don't go over.
Did some of this come out of the audit or anything? Was it, was that how it was determined that it was not added before?
No, every year during the budget, we reestimate out. So then, just looking at the reestimation of what costs could be coming in when you look at your average monthly, it just looked like it was, we were going to be running pretty tight. And instead of having an audit comment to say that we went over the budget for the expenditure line items, the expenditures, the only ones that you amend. So even if revenues were coming in higher, the, it's the expenditures is the only one that you amend to make sure you don't go over. Yep.
Fair, for clarification, does this not affect the tax rate at all that we already approved?
No.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, this is an open forum. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll close the open forum. Next, we have, or I'm sorry, the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. Next, we have open forum. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask that speakers should remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. And I don't have any signups. Do we have any?
No.
All right, there's no signups for the open forum. So next, we have the student representative report. Ross?
Good evening, everyone. This one's really short and sweet, to the point. This past Sunday, the seniors had graduation, so congratulations to all of them. Their class motto should have been, we should, where we didn't start the fire, in my opinion, but anyway. School's coming to an end. All the students and staff are excited about that, you know. Summer coming on, spending time with family and friends and everything in between. Our last day is this Friday, so that's really exciting. As far as sports go, the spring league games, they've pretty much come to a close and actual games will be starting here. I know baseball, they start tomorrow, actually. And they are against, they're playing against Twin Cedars, and that is at Twin Cedars. And then, another upcoming game this week is they play Seymour, and that's at Seymour. And finally, this week, they play Collins-Maxwell, and that's also there. As far as softball goes, they start next week on Monday, the 26th, and they will be playing against Norwalk. And then, the, they will also be playing Ogden as well, and that's at home on the 29th. And yeah, that's it for that week. As far as golf goes, congratulations to Peter Nagel. He made districts. However, he was one stroke away from being able to go to the state tournament. I think he shot like an 83, and he had to be at an 82 or 81. But he had a really good season. He had over 100 career pars, and so he had a really good, really good season. As far as track goes, state qualifiers are Grace Up, Olivia Phillips, Cory Capatrick, Ella Van Dyke, and they will be running later this week. Grace will be doing the 200-meter dash, Olivia will be doing the 400-meter dash, and Cory will be doing the 400-meter dash. Ella will be doing high jump, and Olivia will also be doing 400-meter hurdles, and Cory will be doing 400-meter hurdles as well. So, is there any questions for me? Alrighty, thank you, guys.
I'm served. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Roadrunner Celebrate Success, and I'm going to call for a short recess. If you all would join us out in the main kitchen area to celebrate our retirees. So, call a quick 20-minute recess. All right, we are back from recess. Next, we have the administrators' report. So we'll start with Ms. Woods. Board members should all have a copy of that in their board packet. Is there any questions or discussion for Ms. Woods' report?
I was going to ask to see some pictures of the teachers' tats, but I actually saw some pictures today, so no need. It was awesome.
I just noticed on here, as part of the elementary, I'm guessing rewards for the ISAS, they get to go see a movie, Lilo and Stitch. And is that going to be up at the Osceola Theater? Okay, that's awesome. So, and thanks to the Harzcamp family, it looks like they're paying for that. So, it's really nice of them. I want to go see that movie myself, so. Well, congratulations on reaching your genesis goal, so. If there's nothing else, thank you, Ms. Woods. Next, we have Mr. Bechel's report. Any discussion or conversation on, Mr. Bechel, or any questions?
I had one. Is this on?
Nope.
Okay, sorry. It's so loud, I can't, oh, dear God, it's there. Jesus. On the, when you're talking about the proficiency, when you said like the 1% growth, is that averaged out from the high school and middle school? I know we had discussed the other day, and I couldn't remember. Was that an average, or was that like for... So it was all of them like averaged out, a 1% growth? And that was in both ELE and math? Okay. Thank you. I was just wondering, looking at the number, I couldn't remember what we had said, so, thank you.
And then, the recap on the de-cap, I remember when you brought that up last time, you had to show it to the board and everything, and you were working on improving that score. Is this just like another round of requirement, or did anything change in the de-cap report at all?
No change in our de-cap. Not sure why that happened.
Okay. Okay, just accidentally linked in this report. Okay.
Go to another question to, if there are other things, I don't think they have one.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bechel? Okay. Next, we have Ms. Good's report. Any discussions or anything on Ms. Good's report? So, I did, I wanted to say thank you. I see you took the time to, you know, get, get all the information, you know, that shows kind of over the years, from the fall of 2020 to the spring of 2025, how we've kind of, you know, progressed with different kids in each category. And I think for me, that's really helpful to understand, you know, are we seeing any ups and downs? If I'm looking at this, we're staying pretty steady on the IEPs, it seems like, going through year over year. Some of the data we don't have, and thank you for the bullet items down there to kind of explain. And I think going forward, it'll be useful to have that, that information. Do you, you know, foresee the fall of 2025, you know, being any different or somewhere close around the 92, you know, 95 headcount or whatever? And I'm asking that just, you know, so we know as we're looking at associates and looking at, you know, potential changes in associate pay as well. I think the legislature just passed, I don't know if you saw that, but they passed a funding bill for that, just so we can be, be aware of what that looks like for us. And I know you mentioned that it's, what we really should look at is the number for the shared associate students, and that, that's kind of where we're a little bit overloaded, or a lot of students for one associate. Do you have an idea, or could you potentially bring back, of what you would like that number to look like in the future? And also, you may potentially lose associates as well, so, okay. No, just having an idea of, you know, now we have a baseline of, you know, where we've been at, understanding where you'd like, you know, for us to get to, what that ratio would look like would be really helpful, I think, in having those, you know, planning discussions, so. Thank you for taking the time to do that. Are there any other questions, Ms. Good?
I saw on here that has this opioid grant. Is this for, through the, three Madison County schools, so all, like, winter set and stuff? And is that educational for, like, all kids, or is this for families that are targeted? And then, if so, how are we going to know that? Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Good? Thank you. All right, and last, we have Mr. Weber's report. Any questions or discussions for Mr. Weber?
Did I hear Ross say we had a golfer make it to sectionals, correct?
District.
District, because I didn't see in the report. Okay, and if I saw the post right on Facebook, is this like our first since, like, 2010, 2011 or something? For, wow, and you missed it by one stroke. All right, great state, that's awesome, though. What grade is he in? Oh, so he has time, okay.
So I noticed we had an update on the Facilities Committee. Thank you for that. They're, are they pulling together, like, content for the public? So, you know, like elevator pitch and things like that, like this is what the, the potential, you know, or this is what the facilities plan looks like, this is what the potential bond, you know, would fund, what it wouldn't, and things like that, and that's content and different, I don't know what you want to call it, flyers or whatever, that, that, you know, people can access to get factual information?
When are we thinking we're going to have that? Do you have an idea? Like, end of, I mean, I know you guys are really busy wrapping up everything for the end of the school year. I'm just curious.
I know it's on here, and people can see it, but exciting that the first, the opener is the 29th, and like youth can come if they have their jerseys and come cheer them on, and some old coaches coming in to throw in the first pitches, and yeah, so that's awesome, exciting.
Yeah, and, and I was able to attend, and while it was really windy, it was beautiful. It was amazing. I mean, comfortable, you know, I mean, just everyone was, I used the restroom, because I thought, well, you know, might as well use it anyway. I, you know, no shower curtains, anything like that, but it's super exciting. I kept looking over there at the concession stand, and somebody'd asked that night, "Is it open?" I said, "No, not yet. It's a scrimmage," but I think there's a lot of excitement. You know, I had someone asking me, "Well, what's going over there in the grassy area?" Well, and that opens the door, you know, for the future of what Phase 2 would look like. So, I think we're going to get lots of questions, you know. So, I think being prepared on the 29th is going to be really exciting, just to talk through the survey results and what the priorities were that came out of that. So, looking forward to just having that out there.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the superintendent report. We have a facilities update. Mr. Brandon?
Yeah, Garrett couldn't be here tonight, but there are still a few punch list items that were, that they're completing up at the baseball/softball complex. We've got pretty much free rein to everything up there now, which is awesome, and then be ready to go for our doubleheader on the 29th. Our, the rest of our air conditioning for our instructional spaces, that'll be, that work will begin, that installation will begin that first week of June. So we get out this week. We'll have a few teachers here next week and staff, and then the week after that, they'll start installing, installing those units so that we're ready to have all of our instructional spaces air-conditioned at the beginning of, or in the fall, so. And then, yeah, it's full steam ahead with our facilities work and those conversations.
Any questions for Mr. Brandon? Thank you, sir. All right, next, we have our discuss and approve the consent items. So, we had the past board meeting minutes. You guys should have access in your board packet. The monthly bills and financial statements, resignations and contracts. For the hires, we have Jesse Baldwin hired as assistant high school girls' basketball coach. Lindsay Strabel hired as the district nurse. Doyle Jamison hired as a bus driver. For resignations, Kelsey Stonehocker resigns as assistant middle school girls' track and field coach. Jeff Douglas resigns as assistant high school football coach. Amber Sari resigns as food service worker. Brenda Streeter resigns as associate. Jesse Baldwin resigns as head middle school basketball coach. Jesse Baldwin resigns as assistant middle school basketball coach. Nicole Blackford resigns as associate. And Kevin Boyes resigns as assistant high school boys' basketball coach. Open enrollment, we had four open enroll in. We have our approval of the OPN March Pay Apps for our Labs and Fields Project and Master Planning for $4,318.11. Then, approval of March Pay App for the Fields Project for $51,458.32. And then finally, approval of the DCI invoice number 15 for $6,326.43. Is there a discussion on the consent items? What is the DCI invoice for, for $6,326? Pre-construction design bidding contract for...
That's where the work the DCI does, Garrett.
Okay. Okay, all right. Gotcha. Thank you.
I'm curious on open enrollment. Do we ask parents why they're coming to I-35, and we capture that data?
I have never asked why.
Yeah, I mean...
Once I started, Jennifer is starting to collect that data so that we can look at it and see what the reasoning is. If they give it, we can't force, but it is
Sure.
nice to start gathering it, so we should have about a year of new ins and outs where we've at least asked that question.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion on the consent items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
It's been properly motioned to approve the consent items. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Next, we have our action agenda items. The first thing is the FY-25 budget amendment that we had the open forum for earlier. Is there any discussion on the FY-25 budget amendment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the FY-25 budget amendment.
I will make a motion to approve the FY-25 budget amendment.
It's been properly motioned to approve the budget amendment. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Next, we have the SUIC Equipment Maintenance Insurance. Board remembers Superintendent Brandon has talked to us about this a couple times, sent a video for us to watch. I don't know if you want to give a quick summary. You'll say it better than me.
I'll add some information, then April can, can chime in as well. So this is something we've been looking at for, well, since July, since when I came in. So, equipment maintenance, essentially, what we can do is we can pay the premium out of our management fund for, a lot of times, it gets used for devices, Chromebooks, computers, that get broken and repaired. And then, all of that reimbursement that we get out of that insurance goes into our general fund, which our general fund, we can use to pay salaries and, and other things like that. We cannot use our management fund for that. So, it creates flexibility within our general fund and just allows us another avenue to be able to do that. Another thing that, that this insurance allows us to do is if we have an employee that fixes something, it could be a vacuum cleaner, we can also build that insurance, that time, that, for that repair. So, they will reimburse us for that employee's time as well. So, it's just, if, if used properly and the paperwork is submitted, it can be very beneficial. April has graciously volunteered to lead that paperwork submittal and, and make sure that it's being followed that way too. So, as, you know, as long as it's get used and, and we, we make sure we follow and align to what SUI has laid out, it can be beneficial to utilize that management fund to pay for that premium and then get that reimbursement into the general fund. Do you have anything to add, April?
Nope, that pretty much covers it. We're not covering all of our devices right now, just the new ones that we're potentially purchasing.
Do we have, or do we need a policy in the event that an employee could get reimbursed? I mean, do we need, you know, just outlining what that looks like? Is there a cap on it, what the process is?
When we say reimburse, the district is getting reimbursed, so the staff would make their wage for doing the work, and then, the reimbursement back to us might be half or at their full wage, where then it just goes back into the general pot. It doesn't go additional funds to the employee.
How does this work with, like, the guy that we share working on the buses? Because he self-performs, but technically, we pay him.
Buses are not included.
That's equipment.
It, we fight that every time we talk about it, and there's even a picture in their application under the "not approved."
Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the SUIC Equipment Maintenance Insurance.
I'll make a motion to approve the SUIC Equipment Maintenance Insurance Recommendation for Jester Insurance Services.
It's been properly motioned to approve the Jester Insurance Services for $117,963. Do I have a second?
I will second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Next, we have the Approval Transfer of State Funding for the Heartland AEA. The purpose of the contract is to establish an automatic process for transfer of 90% of the state funds allocated to the school district for AEA with special education support services under Iowa Code Section 257.10 to the AEA in compliance with House File 2612. Do I understand this? It's something the board can't not approve, but it requires the board to approve. So it would be against the law for us to vote no, but we still have to vote.
Well, yeah. Technically, yes. Nobody knows what would happen if you wouldn't approve it, but code states we have to send 90% of our funding to the AEA, so. But Iowa code also states that we have to have board approval, so this is the board approval to do that. Just want to point out that this contract is a three-year contract, just so we don't have to do this annually. AEA just puts it into a three-year contract, so.
Is there discussion on the transfer of state funding with Heartland AEA? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the approval of the transfer of state funding with Heartland AEA.
I motion to approve.
It's been properly motioned to approve the 90% of our state funds allocated to the AEA. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Next, we have the 7 through 12 summer school. It will be invitation-only, held for three consecutive weeks, and June 9th through June 26th. One teacher for 48 hours, four days per week, and four hours each day at $25 per hour. Associates will be assigned, per student needed, at their current hourly rate. Is there any discussion on the 2025 summer school? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the 2025 summer school.
I will make a motion to approve the 7 through 12 summer school plan for 2025.
It's been properly motioned. It's been properly motioned to approve the 7 through 12 Summer School Plan. Do I have a second?
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the Approval of AC Repairs. Sounds like our fitness room, the driver in the HC Commons HC unit for $18,000 for Travis Mechanical. So I had another AC go out.
Yes, in both the, whoops, in the High School Commons here and the Fitness Room. The Fitness Room is more, is, will cost more. It's a driver and a compressor. Commons here is just the driver, but it won't, Travis Mechanical said it won't exceed $18,000 and they can get in and get, get the work done right away, so.
Have they both been down for quite a while, or?
The Fitness Room has been down for a couple weeks, at least, right? Okay. Fitness Room has been down a couple weeks. The High School Commons happened just recently. But since we were getting quote for that, we went ahead and that needs to be replaced too, with summer coming up, so.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the AC repairs of the Fitness and High School Commons? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the AC repairs in the Fitness Room and High School Commons.
It's been properly motioned to approve the AC Fitness repairs for Travis Mechanical, not to exceed $18,000. Do I have a second?
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have our sharing agreements with other districts. Library Science to Winter Set, Winter Set to I-35 for 10 days. Workplace Learning, I-35, 34%, Clark, 33%, Murray, 33%. Our Transportation Director, Southeast Warren, 80% to I-35, 20%. HR Payroll Coordinator, I-35, 60%, Southeast Warren, 40%. Maintenance Director, I-35, 80%, Southeast Warren, 20%. Business Manager, I-35, 80% to Sheraton for 20%. Special Ed Director, Sheraton, 80% to I-35, 20%. SRO Madison County, 26% and I-35, 74%. And note that the DMAC College and Career Transition Counselor was approved in FY-25 for a three-year agreement. Is there a discussion on the sharing agreements with the other districts?
Can you just remind me which ones are brand new?
The ones to Sheraton, so that would be myself going to Sheraton, sharing with them for 20%. And then Sheraton sharing with us for the special education, 20%. 20% is the minimum that you can do a sharing, and that's for the most part going to be virtual and assisting each other in those actual going, isn't something, unless it really, something major happened. No, and both of those are set to just a set amount of $25,000. So even if there is a salary difference between their person and myself, we just, both districts decided on just, we'll send, pay $25,000 and then receive $25,000.
Thank you.
And then, and then as part of that, so we we pay each other, it's a wash, but the part of that, we get sharing dollars from the state. Can, can you recap exactly how much we get? So it's a wash, us paying each other, but each of us get a certain amount of money from the state because of that.
Yep, it goes by student count, so the other business managers worth four students, the special ed director is worth two students. With changes from last year, with the curriculum director, that one was worth two students, so it's for additional students and then we're not losing those two now. They've been replaced, and it's approximately around 8,000 per student.
So we're basically picking up four times eight, $32,000, somewhere around that.
Additional from last year.
Yeah, additional from last year.
Yes.
An additional $32,000 for the sharing agreements with Sheraton.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the sharing agreement with other districts.
I motion to approve the sharing agreement with the other districts.
It's been properly motioned to approve the presented sharing agreements. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Next, we have Approval of the Science Curriculum. We had Inspire 9 through 12 was $39,534. And Amplify for 2nd through 8th grade, $64,311. The recommendation from the administration is approve the purchase of Inspire and Amplify for the science curriculum for $103,845. Is there a discussion on the science curriculum? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the science curriculum.
I will make a motion to approve the science curriculum.
It's been properly motioned to approve the science curriculum for $103,845. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the Magic School AI Tool. Looks like, read through all this, but it's a digital tool for Magic School for academic and data security. Using the team's review process, found that Magic School offers AI-powered tools that can streamline academic tasks, enhance personal learning, and promote AI literacy. Magic School offers a variety of features designed to improve teaching and learning outcomes, including lesson planning generation, student feedback tools, and content creation. Magic School is designed for academic use and offers a more tailored approach to education AI tools and provides far better data protection for users compared to commonly known tools such as ChatGPT. Let's see, recommendation for approval of purchase of Magic School for $5,999. Is there a discussion?
Is this a one, yeah, 12-month licensing? Is this an automatic renewal, or? Is it, I know this is just for one year, but is it automatically renew every year?
I, it might, where this is the first time that we've paid for the subscription, and so then again, with it being over the 5,000, we've got to get approval too. Do you happen to remember, Heather, if it automatically renews? It does not. Okay.
What'd you say?
It doesn't, so we'll
Just in case it's
We'll get billed each year.
Cause I would imagine that there's going to be a lot of different technology out there for AI. So in case it's, you know, not the right fit for the district, just want to make sure it doesn't auto-renew and you have that opportunity to get out of a contract if, but I guess it's the licensing, it's not so much a contract, so. Okay, thanks.
So I'm the, I'm the tech guy on the board here. Even in my organization, we, you know, have a lot of developers and people that are wanting AI for things and and wanting to spend money on it. And one of the things we focus on is what are some of the objectives or key results, you know, that we have to document out of? You know, when we get this tool, what do we want to see change? What do we expect the outcome is going to be? So I understand why we're purchasing this, but do we have certain objectives and key results that we've identified? So that way, when you come back a year from now, you can say this helped us achieve these things that weren't working before or we didn't have before, rather than just, you know, purchasing a tool to have, you know, a tool for a tool's sake. So do we, do we have those defined? Like what objectives, what key results are we wanting to see that this investment of $6,000 is going to return us?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good question, a deep question, but I think Heather and her team will work through that. I think one thing it's going to create is simplicity for our teachers, right? As you think about some of the things that are in that description, and when it talks about helping with lesson plan generation, your student feedback tools, content creation assistance, that type of thing. Those things take a lot of time for our teachers, which is extremely valuable. And so I think initially, as as we jump off into it, it's going to help alleviate some of that and help alleviate some of that stress that that causes. And I think that's where Heather and her team will work through that and and we'll set, we set aside some time in August for for some training and to work through with teachers and making sure that that, that this tool is being used. And the tool can be used in so many different ways, a lot of which would, hasn't even been scratched the surface yet, right? So how we utilize it, I think, will continue to grow. And being a new tool, it's, it's hard to spend $6,000 to say, we're going to get better at it, right? But I think that's where we put the trust in our technology team and our teachers, who are going to spend the time and and effort to make sure that this tool is going to be used to enhance their classroom that way.
No, and I, and I appreciate that. I think one example you gave is the, the lesson plans, right? And and a good example of something, I guess, I would encourage and ask the administration to look at is right now, a lesson plan takes X amount of time to to do, you know, whatever that is, like hit that quantitative number. And then say with Magic School, it takes Y amount of time, right? So it decreases, it took, even if it takes 10 minutes, you know, per teacher, collectively, that's a huge amount of, you know, time across each teacher. Maybe it's more than, I don't know, but really trying to understand what we're trying to drive with the tool will be good because then that'll justify the expense for it, so.
And I'm, and I'm sure Heather and her, and her team or or her team would be happy to come back in the fall and and talk about what that training looked like and how we're currently utilizing those, that tool. We can provide an update, that'd be easy to do.
Thank you.
Do you know if paying for it opens up specific aspects of it? Cause I know I use this and I'm able to use like almost every feature for free as a teacher.
From what I remember, yes, it does.
Heather can speak more to that, cause she's dug into it more than I have, so Heather, if you want to share what kind of things it, it opens up?
Yeah, so a lot of the tools are available as a free user. What really the paid version provides is a lot of saving those, manipulating those, being able to download the content and refer back to it later. It's more, it allows for more saving of the content that you use when you generate it through Magic School. And then you can get back to it later versus trying to keep copying. Basically, you're not copying and pasting as much. It provides some cloud storage for the teachers, what they develop. As well as support in PD.
I, I guess I don't have any concerns, you know, approving it. I would like to maybe spend some time talking with you to learn a little bit more, you know, about that and also, you know, look at those objectives and key results, so I think that's important with any software we purchase. And it just reminds me, I think we purchased some software, or approved purchase some software last year that was meant to help us identify licenses and, you know, excess and reduce costs. And one of the things the board had asked was a presentation back on, okay, we invested this much money in that software. We, you know, someone was going to come back and tell us, okay, what we saved, so if we could also add that to a future board meeting as well to to show us what that saved, so.
Yeah, and and Heather's done a nice job of tracking all that and going through that. We've, we've seen some significant cost savings through that as well, so we can bring that back.
Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation to approve the purchase of Magic School for $5,999.
I'll make a motion to approve the Magic School AI Tool for $5,999.
It's been properly motioned to approve the purchase of Magic School. Do I have a second? Seeing as I don't have a second, motion failed. All right, next, we have the Student Chromebook Purchase. Every year, we purchase new Chromebooks for the incoming 5th through 9th graders. The Chromebooks are used for four years as part of our one-to-one plan, and then repurposed for the elementary carts or recycled, depending on the condition. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of student Chromebooks for $46,363.75. Is there a discussion on the student Chromebooks? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, the recommendation is to approve the purchase of student Chromebooks for $46,363.75.
I will make a motion to approve the student Chromebooks for $46,363.75.
It's been properly motioned to approve the purchase of the Chromebooks. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the second reading of the Board Policy Approvals. We discussed this at the last meeting. Just a recap for the board, if you guys remember, a lot of this had to do with changes required by the legislator passing, changing or updating the Civil Rights Code, so it was just going through modifying some of those wordings to to match Iowa law. And I've read through these and didn't see anything of of concern. I don't, I don't think anything's changed since then, so. These are all provided by ISB, correct? Recommendation from ISB. So is there any discussion on the Board Policy Changes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Board Policy Updates.
I will make a motion to approve the Board Policy Updates as presented.
It's been properly motioned to approve the Board Policy Updates. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Next, we have the Approval of the DMAC Youth Consortium Credit Recovery Program for 2025-2026 School Year.
Is this a new program, or is this something that we've approved or that we've had in the past, or is it new?
This is, this is an annual agreement with with DMAC for their credit recovery.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the DMAC Youth Consortium Credit Recovery Program.
I'll make a motion to approve the DMAC Youth Consortium Credit Recovery Program.
It's been properly motioned to approve the Credit Recovery Program. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have our upcoming dates. Our next board meeting is June 23rd, 2025. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so if the board members could please check their email. Superintendent Brandon is requesting our availability of a potential workshop on June 11th. So just to get back with him, that might be another board date, so. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's been properly motioned to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.